Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the City of Bettendorf Committee of the Whole Meeting. Today is Monday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. It's five o'clock P. M. We do have some items to appear on tomorrow night's agenda that we will discuss this evening. The first is our public hearing with regard to the Spencer Creek Lift Station bid package one. For that, we welcome our city engineer.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Brent Morlock.
I will run the first two items concurrently. It's all the same project.
Correct.
Lift station. As you can see, that's a total of six items on the actual agenda tonight, mostly all related to the SRF funding that we've discussed for the project. So the project did bid last week. We had some very successful bids. Bid package number one, the lift station, had a total of ten bidders. Came in just over a million, just under a million dollars under the budget. Bid package number two, the Fort Smith and Sewer Project, had six bidders and came in four hundred thousand under budget. So we were a total of just right about one point four million under budget as we get ready to hopefully make award and then move into construction. There are two kind of procedural items for this due to the SRF requirements and the opinion of bidding compliance that we have to have from Aylers. We took bids last Tuesday. One of the bidders, the lift station bidder, is a newer bidder to us. Jim Schroeder Construction out of Bellevue actually built the Indiana Bridge that we did about three years ago, but has never worked wastewater in the Quad Cities that we were aware of. So we were waiting on some reference material. So we couldn't get a full opinion on the bid in time. But to keep the proceedings moving, you will see there is two resolutions that are titled making award that we would like to postpone to the next meeting, but we want to keep everything running concurrently. We have since received the references from them. He's done a lot of work around the state in this. So we're going to be very comfortable moving forward with it. But again, we just didn't have time to give Aylers everything they need to allow us to move forward on a couple of those resolutions.
That would be items to appear nine and twelve, correct? Would you like us to then move those off of tomorrow night's agenda by motion at this meeting?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Second.
All right.
You're too quick for me, Your Honor.
We had that set up, but it.
I'm sorry.
No, no, we just gonna, all we want is for it to get done.
You said Greg.
We don't care who gets the credit.
You said Greg.
Where were you at rehearsal?
All right, all those in favor of removing nine and twelve from tomorrow night's agenda in favor of pushing them back to the next meeting based upon the comments of our city engineer, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Brent, sorry, I just thought that would might be an opportune time to get it done.
Streamline a couple of items. So I will also take the next item. Allow us to move forward with that. That is a resolution authorizing a transfer of funds within the CIP. Based on some feedback from council earlier in the year, we are not requesting any additional funding. We've just had some needs come up at a couple of the city facility locations that we'd like to postpone a project that was planned to start this year. So it's project PW zero six zero four. It's a total of six hundred thousand dollars in the CIP, staged out over three years to do door replacements at Public Works. The big bay garage doors are all needing to start being replaced. I think they're about fifteen years old. They take a lot of wear and tear. They're open and closed constantly. We had planned to start that this year. I've talked with Mike Arnold, our building maintenance manager, and some of these other needs that have come up, he would like to prioritize those this year and push back the door replacements. So again, no additional funding. But he did have three or four projects come up. One of them is, and there's also a corresponding consent item to purchase the software to upgrade our building management software. So that's our HVAC software for City Hall. It's a very old system, needs replaced, and we have a chance with the vendor Johnson Controls to get a bit of a discount. I think it's end a maybe a lifecycle on the latest upgrade. So there was a discount as an existing customer. We ran into some gate controller needs for the back gate here at City Hall, the police gate, specifically the west gate. I know that one needs it. So the gate controllers need to be replaced. We need a new transformer at the library, and the library also needs some new frequency drives and their mechanical systems. All told, that's a little, little under a hundred thousand dollars. So again, not asking for any additional funding. If any of those come in over, we'll have individual items to approve them as they come. Said only one of them is moving forward tonight. And if there is any money left in that account, which there should be, we might get started on some of the door replacements. But just wanted to run the change by council and get a formal approval if possible.
Any questions for Brent? Yes, Greg A.
Brent, so what I understand you want to do is you want to just reallocate some of the money from year one door replacement into these projects.
Exactly.
And the idea is you're going to push the door replacement from years one, two, and three to years two, three, and four of the CIP plan.
Yes, so there would be an increase in that year four that's not currently shown.
That's what I was asking. Is for year four, is it the position of staff that we should simply fund the additional two hundred thousand above the currently scheduled projects? Or do you have a recommendation on two hundred thousand dollars worth of cuts to offset this slide to year four?
Right now, we wouldn't be any, asking for any change in year four. We'd bring that forward when we have a little more time to look at it over the end of the year. So during budget sessions this fall, when we go to set the CIP for the next five years, then we would bring forward that request.
Okay. When it comes forward, I'd ask that you remind us of this.
Sure.
So that we understand that this is a two hundred thousand dollar extra ask in year four that wasn't originally thought of when we talked about the five-year plan last year.
Absolutely. And to your point, we may be able to find some cuts, and we may be able to get some of that done yet with this two hundred. So it may not be a full two hundred that gets asked.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Other questions for Brent? All right, that will appear tomorrow at item fifteen. We move to our last items to appear at number sixteen. This is a resolution approving a final plat of Shadow Valley Edition. That we welcome. Mark Hunt, our committee development director.
My presentation was here a minute ago. I don't know.
So Taylor's gonna find it.
And Angie's coming up. I suspect Jeff will be moving over there in a minute, too.
Just for the record, I never touched that computer.
Talks amongst yourselves.
Smoke them if you got them.
For NetSuite.
Taylor, is it on PC mode on the right?
Take a break in place.
There's three little things. Laptop, it should say. It should be on PC.
Jeff, you might come over.
That's all right. I'll get it. You'll be there later. I got plenty of time. Did you ask for brother, right? What's that? Didn't you put Montana's?
Did you load it on that one?
Yeah, it was. Yeah. It was set up on screen.
Why don't we move to Jason Schat, who can give us our update on NetSuite? Is, oh, is your, your presentation too? If you're gonna, yeah, I was thinking maybe you were just gonna give us a little update from, without a real presentation like a PowerPoint.
I can do that if you'd like.
That may be good.
Ah, live theater.
We're on the record testing this just around four fifteen, and everything worked great.
We have an IT person downstairs. Hi, Craig. Thank you, Craig.
I restarted this computer, and I just turned off. There it is.
Like magic.
I feel scared of you.
Mark, you think you're ready to rock and roll?
I think we're on, Your Honor.
Fantastic.
So we apologize for that slight technical.
Craig's a magician. Thanks, Craig. Thanks, Craig. Angie was actually brilliant. Thanks, Angie.
First, please, I have, I actually have two different parts of the agenda. Case twenty-four zero three-two is Shadow Valley Edition Final Plat. It's really a replat. I have Taylor Bestwick here. He's a city planner who worked on the case, and he has a lot of the details. I'll give you kind of the high view. If there's questions, Taylor and I can kind of tag team on those. The applicant is Scott Pierce slash Blue Water Group. It is a final plat or replat. I'll note right away that the map's showing several involved lots. Really now, this is reduced down to just one lot to be involved, and that's the one here, Valley Brooks Estates Third Edition Lot One. Again, ignore these lots. They're no longer involved since the applicant has removed a request for a walkway easement through the property, being vacated. They've taken that request away. So now the only lot of record that's affected is that previous lot, which would be divided into two lots under their proposal. And Lot Two and Lot Three would be the new lot split creating the Shadow Valley Edition. So really just these two lots. Point out, one lot's about forty-eight thousand square feet, and one lot's about nineteen thousand, twenty thousand square feet. Round numbers there. And these would be R-one lots, and they do meet our minimum requirements for R-one lots as far as size goes. So we had a recommendation from Planning and Zoning that reduced our, our area of interest down to one lot, saying we would support the lot split. Anything else that was put on the plat is off the table. And that's what P N Z brought to you today. That kind of leaves you as city council with two options. You can deny the P N Z, the lot split that P N Z recommended going forward. And Iowa Code Section three fifty-four point eight kind of talks you or walks you through that denial process. Also, you could approve it. The same state code also applies, depending on how you do the balancing test that's provided in Iowa three fifty-four point eight. Our city attorney can explain to you here in a second. If we do go for approval as council, we're gonna need a new drawing. And I think that's evident, right? Since we're no longer talking about involving these lots, what was Lot One, Lot Five, Lot Four, we'd want a drawing that just shows the involved lot. If there was an approval, it's a dial. I think it's a moot point, and you just deny it at this time. Does that make sense? Are there any questions?
Questions? Greg J.
Mark, can you go back to the very first slide? Can you tell me where the split will be in that lot, the Valley Brooks Estates Third?
Sure, approximately. I'll just draw here.
Yeah.
Something like this, maybe more pointed.
So the current use of the lot looks to me like it's fairly heavily wooded.
It is.
And so any actual use of the lot would probably get rid of the trees that are there currently?
If we're developed, yeah. Yeah, I don't know how you.
The assumption is that you're splitting it, so it's gonna be developed.
If we're developed, I don't know how you wouldn't get rid of some of the trees or most of the trees.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, any other questions?
Nick. Thank you, Your Honor. So as I'm thinking through this split and division of the property, it appears as though the lots are pretty decent size, and I read through the packet with all the extra details. Do we know what the distance between, you know, rough distances between the homes that are existing today and that would potentially change if we subdivided this piece here down into a smaller lot? What that would do to the, the feel of the neighborhood from a spacing perspective?
I don't know, because I don't have a, I don't have a plan for a development on that lot. So I, I don't want to speculate on something I'd never seen drawn. So I don't know what it would be. They would have to meet the side yard setbacks of the R-one district. That, and that can be done on a lot that size. But I can't tell you because I don't have a, I don't have anything to measure against.
The, the R-one minimum would be seven and a half feet. So I believe this lot at the front is somewhere hundred foot, hundred ten foot range.
Seventy. Seventy at the road, I think, is.
It's pretty, yeah, so you're, but you have to design something to fit that.
Go right ahead if you have one.
Yep. So in the packet, it also references some of the runoff. Can you, can you spend a little bit of time on that? Because I know that some of the other council members might have interest in. What does this do from a neighborhood runoff perspective? Are there going to be additional requirements that are put in place for? Because I've driven this area, I've spent some time there. It does appear that this appears to be sort of the natural path that the water will be flowing. What does it look like from our perspective?
Bring the city engineer on, and on this one, but this, this subdivision was built before stormwater code, so it doesn't have the stormwater controls built into the subdivision that we're used to seeing today. Brent can talk a little bit about how that might work.
Yeah, Nick, so there is a, at the southwest corner of the lot south of the one being proposed, sorry, I can't give you a, but right at the bend, there is a flare den section that sits down, that, that whole area is a bowl. So if you, if you picture from the street looking at that house at southeast corner, it's pretty flat, and then it slopes up to would be, would be the wooded area. And there's a collection point down there. So there's a, most of the runoff to the north comes, works its way down there, and it's collected at that point into our city storm sewer and then piped under Shadowport Drive and ultimately down to the creek. Since it would be a one, essentially a new one lot subdivision, it would not meet any of our stormwater requirements. The applicability standards would not, most likely. We wouldn't know that until we would actually get a building plan. But on a eighteen thousand square foot lot, whatever it may be, unless they're gonna disturb over an acre, which they can't do because that's less than, or add more than ten thousand square feet of hard surface, which would be a very large home and a lot of driveway, they would not meet the, the standards to require anything. And again, as Mark pointed out, this whole subdivision, both additions, were built before detention was required. So there is no detention anywhere in the neighborhood.
Thank you. So do I understand that by putting a new house or structure on this with its subdivision, it changes, it would be essentially viewed as a single house subdivision? Is that what, is that how it'd be viewed from our?
Yeah, because it would be, well, I guess the subdivision technically would be two lots, but you'd be adding one new structure.
Okay.
Shadow Valley First Edition would be the, the name of the addition.
Has there been any indication of what the intention of the subdivision of that plat is? Do we know?
So it's R-one, so it would have to be a single-family residential. That's the only use that would be allowed to be developed here.
All right, that's it. Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other questions? Yes, Frank.
It looks to me, as I look at this, that the people that have purchased properties in here have all purchased large parcels of property for big homes, high-priced tank homes. And now we're being asked to subdivide one of those and put a smaller home in there, which will not fit the character of the neighborhood and could affect all of those neighbors in the long run. Is that right?
I think, I think you're making some of the arguments that might lead you towards one way or other on the balancing test. That's part of three fifty-four point eight. And so that balancing test, I would invite the city attorney to jump in. Ask you to look at the petitioners, you know, well-being, but also the, the current residents and the future buyers. And so you can have all three. It's a balancing test between three entities, if you will, the public, the future buyers and, and the petitioner. I hope that sounded correct.
Chris, would you like to talk a little bit about three fifty-four eight?
Sure. Thank you, Your Honor. I, I think, number one, just Iowa Code Chapter three fifty-four relating to plating starts with the, the purpose of, of that chapter of the Iowa Code. And it's really the balancing of interests comes into, comes into the, into the mix and is certainly part of the stated legislative intent of that statute. And then specific to the determination of the, of the city council, it references three fifty-four eight, which has a more specific test for the approval or denial of a subdivision. Our city code also specifically cross-references to three fifty-four point eight. So I'll just be, just to give it a little bit more specificity as to what that section says. It, it says the governing body shall determine whether, one, the subdivision conforms to the comprehensive plan; two, the governing body gives consideration to the possible burden on public improvements; and three, it balances the interests of the owner or the proprietor of the property, the future purchasers, and the public interest in the subdivision. So it's a more specific test in line with the general balancing of interest that is part of Chapter three fifty-four. So that's, I think Mark has summarized it. I wanted to give a little bit more specificity as to what it is that you're balancing. And so that's, that's the test. The one other thing I do want to be clear on, just while I've got the floor, is to the extent or in the event that council does vote to deny this matter or really any quasi-judicial matter, we need to have on the record specific reasons why the, in this case, the plat is objectionable. So we would want those, those reasons to be stated tomorrow, part of the minutes and on the record. So just wanted to be clear on that.
Did that bring any further questions?
Yes, go ahead.
Go ahead, Greg A.
When, Chris, when you say public interest, is that the neighbors, not the city?
Or it could be larger than the neighbors.
It certainly could be the, yeah, I, I.
You say public, you're talking the neighbors, not the city.
That would be the typical one. And this is a little different than, than many subdivisions. Typically, when a subdivision's coming in, it's oftentimes in a cornfield. So the, the neighbors are a joint, you know, subdivisions next to it. But, but yes, that, the neighbors would be part of the public interest as well as, like I said, future purchasers are specifically referenced in the statute.
Okay. Thank you.
Greg J.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mark, in this context, I do want to reference our comprehensive plan. And it appears to me that our comprehensive plan in this context is of two minds. That is, there's certainly sections on it that deal with affordability of housing. And smaller lots are going to generate ultimately houses that are more affordable. And there's some push in the comp plan to help the city or to direct the city towards finding ways for affordable housing. But there's also portions of the comp plan that talk about the preservation of existing neighborhoods so that if you have, such as you have here, large lots, large homes, existing neighborhoods, the splitting of the lot could conceivably change the characteristics of that neighborhood. So is it fair to say that our comprehensive plan is of two minds and perhaps is not as helpful in assisting us to get to a resolution as if it were of a single mind?
Yeah, so I think you and I spent a lot of time reading the same pages in the comp plan today. There are very clear references to community character in our comp plan and our land use planning decisions, and character, and neighborhood character is spoken about a lot in the purpose.
It's really a priority of the comp plan to try and preserve and protect existing neighborhoods.
And it is. That is, that is a true statement. And so to answer your original question, does the comp plan maybe cut both ways on a subject like this? I think it does. I think, you know, you would have to score it yourself and how you feel about this lot, and then also look at three fifty-four point eight, which talks about this balancing test. So I would, I would say the decision, decision before you is you're gonna have to do your homework on your comp plan and then look at three fifty-four point eight and you vote as you will. That's why staff's kind of agnostic here, because we've given you these options, but it's, it's, you know, it's gonna be your decision on those details.
If this were vacant ground and we were simply splitting a lot in order to provide more housing options, the comp plan might lean much more strongly in favor of that because of the affordability push in our comp plan. With the existing neighborhood and the large lots and large houses there, the comp plan doesn't push as hard towards affordability and may push more towards preservation of existing neighborhoods. Would that be fair?
I think that's a true statement. I think that's a fair statement. I think the comp plan makes you think about community character when you review this decision.
Okay.
Because you have an existing neighborhood. If you didn't have an existing neighborhood, I'm not, I'm not sure that community character or neighborhood character would weigh into my decision if I were a voting member of this body, which I'm not, gosh. So I think, I think you're gonna have to, again, look at the comp plan and review those pages. Sounds like you and I did the same reading today, but community character is in there.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Your Honor.
You bet. Greg A.
Thank you, Your Honor. If this is approved, would that encourage other large lot owners? As opposed to if it's denied, would discourage large lot owners? Because just in this neighborhood here, you could probably throw in four or five more homes.
I, I, I don't want to speak for what anybody else is gonna feel like or perceive off of, off of this. I can tell you there is a trend in our country nationally and right here in River City, where larger lots and R-one subdivisions, because of the price of land, are being brought to cities to be subdivided. That is happening.
With the house already on it.
Yes, sir. That's happening here. In the case before you, it's happened in other cases. Some that haven't made it all the way through the cycle, if you will, have had trouble for other reasons. But that is a thing that is happening, and, and the planning profession, we're dealing with it. Taylor has worked on.
Half of us.
Yeah, in our, in our town. And so that is happening. I wouldn't take the general and let that confuse you here, because you have a very specific case, a very specific fact, the specific language in the comp plan, specific language in three fifty-four point eight. But, but I would, this is not an anomaly either. This is a trend we're seeing across the country.
Yes, Nick.
Just for perspective, you mentioned the trend you're seeing. I've, I've heard of this in California and things. What is it, what is the general sentiment in the Quad Cities about this type of? And again, I know it's painting with a very broad brush, but just for, I think, from a context perspective for us, what is, what's, how does Illinois handle? How, how is Davenport handling it right now?
I'm gonna say it's a case-by-case basis. Honestly, it's a case-by-case basis. You have to look at the subdivision. You have to look at the infrastructure. You have to look at the zoning. I'm gonna say it's a case-by-case basis. Honestly, it's a case-by-case basis. You have to look at the subdivision. You have to look at the infrastructure. You have to look at the zoning. You, you can't, broad brush is gonna cause problems. I, I think you should handle it on the facts that are presented to you, the guidance that the comp plan gives you and the guidance that 354.8 gives you, that you have something on that.
I'd just say that, yeah, different character exists and different, you have different character in different parts of town. So it's hard to broad brush it. The merits of each case are different, which makes it tough. Yes, the overall trend might be for trying to find some land that maybe in the past was looked over or looking for future generations, but it's, the character definitely changes from case to case. I think that's happening across the Quad Cities.
Thank you.
Yes, Greg J.
Thank you, Your Honor. In response to Councilmember Palczynski's question, it seems to me that in other areas, there's an emphasis on what are called granny flats, where you allow in single-family residential some additional accessory uses so that you have the ability for multi-generational families to exist on one lot. As I understand our zoning code, one of the things staff was going to do after the comp plan was approved was to try and come up with some zoning code amendments to allow for such things to happen in the city of Bettendorf, to try and assist on this affordability issue. So that you might have granny flats or you might have rental properties in basements, for instance, that might not, not otherwise have been allowed under the old zoning codes as a way of trying to promote the affordability aspect of it. Another aspect of it would be to try and reduce lot sizes and change setbacks. But I think those kinds of considerations were mostly in undeveloped areas. I remember you and I talked about the potential north of Interstate 80 at the far east end of what we are hoping to develop by virtue of this new sanitary sewer system and whether that ground might be susceptible to some of these changes in zoning requirements in order to promote affordability. I don't think there's anything, well, perfectly legal, the splitting of the lot perfectly legal, but I don't think there's anything currently in any of our ordinances or in the comp plan that would push us towards approval of this at this point.
Mark, this is a house with plenty of room around it to create an addition, right? There'd be a, the applicant could add on to the house.
Ye- yes. I think maybe to back up a little bit and add on to that, the, the term of art is accessory dwelling unit. You know, whether it's a mother-in-law suite or a granny flat or a basement that has a rental unit. Accessory dwelling units are maybe for the same reasons that lots are being split across the country or becoming more and more popular across the country. We talk about things like housing crisis and affordable housing. That's not allowed. Accessory dwelling units are not allowed in R1 in the city of Bettendorf under our current code. So that's not at play here at all. That's certainly, to your point, Mayor, this is a large lot existing right now with a, a large house on it that has room for expansion without violating the setbacks that are required in R1, for sure.
Other questions for Mark? Yes, Jerry.
Thank you, Your Honor. At the same time, if you split lots to get smaller lots, you're adversely or potentially adversely impacting the neighbors. The neighbors bought houses, probably paid a premium price for, for those houses because they wanted to be in a neighborhood with the character of, of large lots and, and lots of space. Whereas to comply with our comprehensive plan for smaller lots, we can implement that by the next cornfield out there that, that developer wants to develop. We could allow him to develop 50-foot lots and have those smaller lots. But that way, when neighbors bought into that, they would know what they're buying into. Just like, you know, right down in the first war. Right now, we have a lot of 50-foot lots. But when we, when someone buys one of those, they know what they're buying. They're buying a house in a close neighborhood.
Other questions for Mark? Yes, Lisa.
Just comment. Yeah, you were talking about other towns and stuff, and there's case-by-case scenarios. But this subdivision was built with large lots and to create that character, kind of Jerry's point. People have purchased these houses to have that character. If this was subdivided, it is gonna affect the values of those lots and homes around that. And I think if someone, you know, whomever purchased this, but if someone was looking for a smaller lot, there are other options out there. But I can tell you, I feel like that would be not a good decision to allow this because it's gonna impact those other homes in the neighborhood because it was built and developed with that intent. So anyway.
Other questions? You'll certainly be able to have your discussion tomorrow. No further questions. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Taylor. Appreciate your work on this. We move to our consent agenda items. The first is item H. This is a resolution approving a preliminary plat, Hopewell Farm 3. And this is for Mark and Taylor.
Well, we're off for a better start. Here works cases. This is really two cases because we brought in a preliminary plat and a final plat just so you could compare and contrast what was proposed originally. It's a lot of case history on this case. So on your agenda, you'll have the preliminary plat and final plat just for, you know, kind of your, your viewing pleasure, so you can really see the infrastructure, the, the homes built and then how it will look as a, just a bare plat as well. So let me dive into it here. The applicant here is Scott Wilson. He's with CT Creek. This is the preliminary plat and final plat, as I mentioned. You've seen this area. This is the New Hope Church, just to kind of set your mind here. New Hope Church here. We have some Vila-style homes being built right now. Actually, there's, you can see a couple foundations already in the ground and those are, that's a June 9th photo, so those are farther along than that. This really was one whole subdivision that, that did the housing piece and it was the second edition of Hopewell Farm. The petitioners come to us and asked for subdividing of the roughly 1.3 acre and 1.8 acre pieces. To subdivide them so they have lot lines. Originally, it was a condo regime and they want to subdivide so they have lot lines. They don't really want to change the product. They don't want to change the numbers of products, the, the look or anything like that. But they want to have lot lines underneath them. It's actually easier for them to sell instead of having a condo regime. And there's some financing stuff behind that that's really not on our purview, but it, when you look into it, it kind of makes sense. Just some case history again. This goes back to 2003 when we had the first subdivision come in. That was to reserve this large area for a future church someday. In 2023, the years are the first two numbers here. We had a conditional rezoning of the whole area from A1 to R3, which is now the current zoning for the area we're talking about. Some replats and things like that. Most recently, we had a board of adjustment approval on some minor changes to the allowable lot size to make the townhome-style lots work. So on the interior of these lots, if you imagine just these rectangular townhomes, you can run parallel lot lines. You get some lots that are just on the interior, just a smidge too small. You could do funny things like flare the lot lines to, to give them the, the right size of minimum lot, but doesn't really make sense. Kind of makes odd property lines for people to have disputes over in the future. So here's what first came in, was around 30, 31 units, first proposed to us back in 2023. Again, we're just talking about these interior lots here on the island and the ones on the north here. These were a condo regime, so you had two lots of record, one on the north and one right here in the middle. About 30 units, 30, 31 units when it first came in. To convert them to townhomes, they actually lost one lot, just to make the math work. They lost one lot. So now we're down to 29 lots. And each lot would be a lot of record. So each townhome would have ground underneath it that was owned, not just the condo. That was originally proposed. So it tends to bring a, a, an owner-occupied type of development. I would say materially conforms to the original zoning concept, the site plan. All those are the same. Maybe a little less dense than the site plan, probably a little better snow storage than the original site plan, especially on this, this piece of poster place here. And overall, our density requirements are exceeded. So the only thing we worked on was with them, these interior lots. These one-seasoned twosies kind of in the middle here. Instead of running odd lot lines that would flare out to give them the exact right size, we just let them run straight. Board of adjustment approved with that. And we had that approval last week. So staff does recommend approval of Hopewell Farms' third edition preliminary plat and final plat. Couple of things that we'd want to see. Again, this first came to us as a condo regime, so we want to see that there's HOA involved that's gonna take care of those lot maintenance issues that would have been taken care of in HOA. So we're in the same position from a lot maintenance standpoint as we were if it were still condos. So the, the mowing and that type of thing. And then structures. We don't want to see structures in the rear yards. If it was a condo, they wouldn't have structures in the rear yards. We don't want to give that up. As a city, we want that to be part of that restrictive covenant. I don't have those in hand yet. I would not present this plat to the mayor to be signed until I had those restrictive covenants in hand. And also we have, and this is really code, so probably, although I listed it as a condition, we have a 22-foot minimum width on these homes. So we get the 22-foot wide homes, which is actually part of our code anyway. So those, that's the recommendation. PNC, BOA have looked through it all, as I mentioned. I give a positive staff report as well.
Questions for Mark or Taylor? Greg J.
Did I understand you to say that the board of adjustment has made their approval already?
Yes, sir. Last week on Thursday.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Jerry.
Thank you, Your Honor. These restrictive covenants, they're sort of hard to enforce, aren't they?
We don't enforce restrictive covenants. The, the, they would, that would be an agreement among the private parties to enforce them. So if they weren't following them, that would be up to them to enforce, I guess.
So.
We could, we would not record the plat. We would not sign on the plat if they didn't provide the restrictive covenants.
Yeah, okay. So once the HOA is dissolved, why, there's no enforcement at all?
Yeah, we have, again, HOAs are, that's a, a whole nother issue, if you will. Whenever we have HOAs, it's part, as part of subdivisions, whether it's for storm water retention or ponds or little private parks, anything held in common by the HOA, the, the care and feeding of that's responsibility of the HOA. And if the HOA dissolves or has problems politically, that's up to the HOA to work out. That's not us.
Thank you. Greg.
Mark, I've had a number of complaints from people off of Hopewell Court in concerning the fact of construction vehicles coming out and driving down the, what we call the right-of-way. But the right-of-way in Bettendorf is maintained by the homeowners. And will they be, will the construction people be required to repair those?
Yeah, so I think the build-out you're talking about is actually not these. It's the ones right here that are being built by Silverthorn is the builder. And I did talk to Jim Work, I believe, last week, within 10 days about some of the, just the trimming of that, that boulevard area and also that restoring that boulevard to the proper state when they're done with construction. Quite honestly, there are so many people going in and out of subdivision. Who knows who exactly drove through the boulevard any one time? But Jim has stated they'll come back, they'll, they'll do the mowing. That should be done by now, hopefully. But restoring that boulevard, if there's any threats or anything like that, that will be part of the developer's job, the building's job.
Other questions? Alright, then I'd like to entertain a motion that we have consent H remain on tomorrow night's agenda.
Double move, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, any remaining consent agenda items that anybody would like to discuss as Jason starts to come up for his financial software program report? Anything else on any part of consent?
Good job, Mark.
Okay, then I'd like to entertain a motion that all items on consent be considered as such tomorrow night.
Double move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, anybody have items to be added to tomorrow night's agenda? Frank, what do you want to add to the agenda?
Not to be added, but I'd just like to thank everybody involved with the employee picnic. I thought that went over very well and I thought it was very well organized and a lot of fun for everybody.
Good stuff. Way to go. Alright, let's move to our presentation. Finance Director Jason Chat.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's been a couple of months. We implemented and went live with NetSuite for government financials on June 3rd. We stopped doing transactions on Friday, May 31st, picked up on Monday, June 3rd in the new system. We are, what I say, we are taking money, we are paying money. It's not a fully fleshed out system just yet. We're working on things like payroll and time and attendance with a, with a different vendor. But it is a huge leap forward for the city. And I prepared just kind of a tour of, of the system, if, if you'll indulge me for just a few minutes and I can show you around things that are really cool to me as a finance geek, coming from a 30-year-old system into a modern system. I understand if these aren't as cool to all of you. But I do think it's, it's worth our while to, to kind of give you a tour of what I see every day when I log in. This is my screen. You can see up here in the right, my name, the role that I'm logged in as. This is all cloud-based. It's all top-line security. But if, you know, our systems, our, our, our building was compromised in any way, I could continue to manage the financials from, from any internet-connected device. So the first thing I do, obviously, you have your, your navigation ribbon across the top like you're used to seeing with any web browser. But the first thing that I, I do when I log in is I, I come over here to the left in my reminders tab. I can see right now I have five bills that are pending my approval. Kalissa, my manager of accounting, has zero bills. I keep an eye on her bills because I'm her backup. So if they're starting to pile up in Kalissa's queue, I know I need to probably go in and take care of some of those. There's 13 other bills out there around the city that are awaiting approval of others that I could approve as a backup if necessary. And then one of my favorite little reports here, there's 90 bills in the system. I can see who still has a bunch to approve. So I can give these guys a call if, if necessary, and that never happens. In a little bit more detail, bills pending my approval, I'll expand that and we can actually look at one and I'll show you why I like this so much. So here's all the information that's put in for the bill. If I look, click on system information, see this bill was created by Kim Radcliffe in Parks. As you move up the screen, you can see it went to Kim Kidwell to be approved. She approved it. And next it moves on to me because it's over $5,000, so I'll approve it. All of that used to take place with paper and pen. Now it's all online. It's all visible here. This record will stay with this forever. And we don't need wet signatures on, on paper that we hang on to. The other cool thing is the actual invoice and documentation is attached right here. I can look at it before I approve, make sure everything looks okay. Again, this is paper that we were stuffing in, in file boxes and in file folders before. Now it's all in the system. I'm not gonna go ahead and approve this just yet, because I like to take a little bit more time than this. But that's just a peek at the bill approval, the bill approval process. Again, a huge leap forward from where we were just a couple of months ago. Beyond that, on my home screen, you'll see over here on the right, I have a graph. This is our, our bank balance. So I can keep an eye on this every day. The system is tied directly to the bank. Transactions are coming in and out and we can look and know just how much cash we have available in the bank versus even our payables amount. So the reason you see a huge dip here, don't be alarmed. In the old system, all cash and investments were basically kept in one account. So cash on your financial statement didn't necessarily mean cash in the bank because it was a mix of cash in the bank plus cash that we had invested in other instruments. In NetSuite, those are separate. So you can see we had this peak at one time and that was, that's information from the old system. Now it's corrected. So our bank balance is a little more normalized looking. And as we age through the process, this chart will look a little bit more normal. I have a quick navigation center right here. All users have this. Depending on rules, they might see a few. I have a quick navigation center right here. All users have this. Depending on roles, they might see a few different things. But for example, I want to just look at what are the purchase orders out in the pipeline? And I see we have one here for Squirrel's Tree Care. This one is still pending supervisor approval. I can see that it was entered by Jordan Harms in Public Works, and it is waiting on Julia Moore's approval in finance. So it has gone through the approvals in Public Works, and it's just waiting on her. Julie is our kind of last sanity check on POs. So she's not necessarily an approver, but she's the last check before this PO gets issued. And again, just like a bill, all the documentation is attached right here in the system, and she can look and make sure that if that PO requires a council resolution, that that's attached and and everything else is is available. And then one last thing. I have a shortcuts menu over here. I've got some reports and things that I've saved that I can get to easily. Financial statement reports, balance sheet, income statement, cash flow. Those are things that we had to manually create in Excel just a few months ago. NetSuite does this for us. I clicked on that. Income statement report here popped up. This is the general fund. This is last fiscal year, and this is in quite a bit of detail. You can see all the different revenue line item accounts here. I do want to actually kind of show you the drill-down capabilities of this. So I'm going to find the software and hardware line item. There we go. That subscription, so that's not the one. This went really great rehearsal.
You're up a few lines, Jason.
Am I?
Keep going up. Down, down, down. Keep going. Keep going.
Oh, man.
Keep going.
Thank you. So now this takes me into the detailed transactions for the year. But even further, I can look at a single transaction. Here's a bill to Conference Technologies. Can look at that bill again if I if I want to look at the actual invoice. It's attached here. I can go to Conference Technologies as a vendor just from this screen. This is all many, many keystrokes, many, many exiting out in the old system that are eliminated. Each vendor has a dashboard, which is really cool. I can see what bills are out there for this vendor, what accounts we're usually spending our money on, our our money with with this vendor. So anyway, that's just kind of a a real quick and dirty tour of the things that we figured out. There's still a lot more to figure out. Like I said, we're working on time and attendance with a vendor called U K G. That software will integrate with NetSuite, so that payroll will be paid out in NetSuite. But all the time and attendance and and things related to payroll is done in U K G. That's going to be another huge move. That's another paper and pen process that we're going to get rid of in many ways. We're working with NetSuite right now on their budgeting and planning and budgeting platform. You can see it here in the ribbon. It's not fully built out yet, but will be by the time we get ready for budget to start. Departments will be able to populate, build their budgets, build scenarios right in the system rather than us trading back paper with pencil notes and and things like that. So I'm really excited about that. There's some really cool stuff in budgeting. And then reporting. The the reporting capabilities in this are are amazing. It just takes us some time. I think I'm going to have a degree in coding by the time I'm done with this. Just because of you kind of build reports and customize them to your needs. What I am hoping to do is have a basically a monthly report out to you as council members that's kind of high level, and then maybe at the quarterly mark, get into a little bit more details, financial statements, things like that. But that'll be ready very soon. And I think that's everything I wanted to cover. Any questions for me?
Any questions? Yeah, Nick.
This is great. Thank you, Your Honor. This is great. So in terms of the implementation process, I know you said you're sending, receiving a lot of great information in here. Where would you say on a one, two completely integrated, where are we at in that in that process? And is it meeting your expectations from a timeline perspective?
We thought that we would be to to this point in about a year, and we were. There's still some things hanging out there. We've we've done a really good job of integrating the various point-of-sale systems that the departments use. You know, Parks uses ActiveNet, Museum uses Versailles, Palmer Golf uses those things are now are very close, I should say, to just coming into NetSuite automatically. If I'm being honest, I had hopes that those would be done when we went live, and they weren't, but we're making do. On the payroll side, we knew that was a a bigger, better animal. And we took our time with Kathleen and H R to find the right solution for timekeeping and in H R. And we'll build that into NetSuite. That's coming. But I would say as from a from a finance perspective, I we're probably eighty-five percent with everything that we need done. And I'm I'm really happy with the product. We knew there were going to be some headaches and hiccups along the way, and we've we've had a few, but we're working through.
Got it. And then last thought, when you're needing to write code, use Chat G P T. It'll make your life a lot easier. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Greg, Jay.
Thank you, Your Honor. Pick a department at random, a admin. Are you able to tell whether the admin budget is staying within the budgeted amounts or starting to go over budgeted amounts? How does that trigger for you? And then what is your response?
Pick a different department.
You're the only one who wouldn't take it personally.
I'll answer that in two parts. One, when we get planning and budgeting fully stood up, that that will be very easy to because it's a separate module. It'll be pulling in real-time expenditure information into the planning and budgeting module that we can then compare to budgets. What I'm doing in the meantime is a number of these saved searches, and these are kind of our ad hoc reports. So I have right here, perfect expenditures by function. Now, I happen to know what my budget is. But these are our functions. You've seen them on the state forms. This is how we're required to budget, public safety, public works. Admin is down here in general government. So let's see what this is actually showing me. This is just the year before last. Let's just look at last month. So here's the same report just for the month of July. So then I can take these numbers and compare them to budget. I can do this based on function. I can do it by department. You can see over here I could even limit it to a fund if necessary. So until I get planning and budgeting stood up, I'm kind of doing this through save searches right now, but much, much easier than the multiple screens and pencil and paper and printing of things out of the old system.
If a department has gone through a quarter of the fiscal year but has expended forty percent of its budget, do you advise admin on that, or who sort of oversees that end of it?
You know, I don't think we're we're quite there yet, but I think we would, when those triggers are met, obviously, there's a call made or conversation with the department head to say, hey, you know.
Who does that? Do you see it and then do it, or does do you see it and then tell DAC, or how does that work?
Typically.
Or do we just assume that all the departments stay within budget for the whole year and come in in May and say, oh, we got to do these amendments?
Right. Our budgets are normally very predictable, especially on the operating side. So as, you know, I I kind of have a feel for where where any given line item might be at a certain point in a year, and sometimes they they aren't all divided into twelve equal months.
Right, yeah.
So, yeah, that's just usually a phone call between me and the department head and saying, hey, just just so you're aware, this one's getting a little out of line, if they haven't noticed it already themselves.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Other questions? Yes, Jerry.
Couple of questions. Thank you, Your Honor. So the first question is obligations versus expenditures. Do you, does this report allow you to do that, to know that, you know, for for a particular for the C I P, we budgeted two million. The contract award was actually for one point eight, and then as the bills come in, we've maybe only spent one point seven.
I think in terms of obligations, those are only accounted for within the accounting system when the when there is a PO issued.
Okay, yep, exactly.
Encumbers a a an amount. In NetSuite, different from the old system, those are treated as two. While it it encumbers that amount for that account, it's it's not necessarily treated like an expenditure already. Now let me actually run this report, and this will kind of answer Council Member Jager's question as well.
Because you're you're right, you're still going to have a lot of cash on hand. But you have, but but that cash is not available for something else because you've already obligated. You've got a PO.
So this is a another report we can use. Look at budget versus actual. This is the four thousand capital projects fund. If I click on budget versus actual here, let's find an actual account. This is why I can't wait for planning and budgeting to be set up because this report is not exactly user-friendly. You can see there's projects. I have, if you look at the top, and I can't freeze this column right now. Original budget, working budget, actuals, which is actual expenditures, and then to your point, Jerry, here's my encumbrances row. So now I know my remaining budget includes both of those items, actual expenditures and encumbrances. But I would say nothing is encumbered until there's a PO issue. But in the case of a capital project, most of those will come to you before there's a PO issued, so it's just not encumbered, say, at the time that we approve the C I P.
Right, yeah. That would be my expectation, yes. And then my second question is about once a month, we read in the newspaper here on the news that, you know, some small town in Iowa is is had eighty thousand dollars embezzled by one of their employees. How does this system help you avoid that for us?
That, not unlike cybersecurity, is done in layers, right? And this is, NetSuite is a big layer, but it's only one of the layers. But you can see that record of what has happened in a in a any particular bill, who entered it, who approved it, who changed it, at which step. That's all lives in the system forever. That never goes away. So that would be our first or a forensic auditor's first stop. One of the things that we rely on heavily is, separate from NetSuite, is positive pay through our bank. So we we actually send the bank a file that says we cut this many checks. They were for this amount. They were to this person, and this is the check number you should see on that check. And then we get exceptions frequently. It's actually, we caught a few fraudulent checks over the summer. Someone presents a check to the bank. It might have the right number. It might be the right amount, but if the payee has been changed, they don't they don't push that check through. They send it to us, and we either say yes or no. So that's one, that's another layer. And then finally, it's just separation of duties, which we've actually more than just, you know, doing that in practice and more than just putting that in a in a piece of paper or a procedure manual. We've been able to separate duties within the system. There's different layers of approval. There's different access within the system depending on your role. And again, if you look up at the top, I'm logged in as finance director. I have a lot of access in the system in that role. There are other roles throughout the city that don't have nearly the same access, can't do the same type of things. So I think we've attacked that through layering of controls. Not unlike cybersecurity, there's probably no perfect system. But we're we're certainly aware of the risk and doing what we can to prevent.
Jason, you could talk about Dottie's role.
Right. Dottie is our senior accountant. She's been with the city for twenty-five years, probably. And and her role is really to reconcile everything that comes through NetSuite to the bank statement. She spends a huge amount of time on that task. That task is going to be a lot easier in that suite, I will say. I'm like a salesman all of a sudden. But that process really takes her into the weeds on every payment, every check that leaves the city. So if by some reason that that positive pay layer didn't catch it, it would certainly be caught by Dottie, and that's a process she does currently monthly. It is possible to do it more frequently now in the new system, so we're catching or reconciling bank transactions a little bit more frequently, but yeah, so she's an integral part in that, and that is that duty is kind of specific to her, but she doesn't touch any of the other things. So, you know, I I'm comfortable with how that works.
Thank you. All right, other questions? All right, and I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
So moved.
We stand adjourned. Good work, people. We'll see you tomorrow.